And welcome to the Tuesday, November 12th Maplewood City Council Manager Workshop. City Manager Coleman, would you do our roll call, please?
Absolutely. Councilmember Neblet?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Juneman?
Here.
Councilmember Knutson?
Here.
Mayor Abrams?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Neblet. The motion to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have no unfinished business tonight. We do have one item of new business, a proposal to transform the Police Advisory Commission to a multicultural advisory commission. And with that, City Manager Coleman, did you want to start?
Sure.
And then we'll have Chief Nadeau and then our two lieutenants. Just a few moments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In your packet in the staff report, it gives sort of a history of how we got here. It started way back in, I think it was 2017, with the Philando Castile shooting. That was 2016, with the use of force work group. And then it, after their work was completed, it morphed into a police advisory commission. And over the course of the last year or so, we started to wonder if the original concept of the police advisory commission really fit for the things that we were looking for through our strategic plan and our strategic priorities, which include community inclusiveness. And so, we had a meeting with the Police Advisory Commission in May to talk about looking at some other options for what might work better, because this commission never really functioned like a true city commission had in the past, or does. So, in May, Mayor Abrams and myself met with the PAC and Public Safety Director Nadeau to start asking for some other models and other ideas for how to move forward with our strategic objectives. And in April, or, I'm sorry, September 25th, the Police Advisory Commission heard a presentation from our lieutenants, which are going to be here this evening. And at that meeting, the PAC did make a motion, approved a motion, to support the transformation of the PAC, the Police Advisory Commission, to a multicultural advisory committee. So that new structure that is being proposed is brought forward for you this evening for your consideration.
Chief Nadeau?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, without trying to repeat some of the background provided by City Manager Coleman, I would say that in our community and in communities across America, police departments really need to be doing that, that work of making sure that they understand the people in their community, that they're having regular dialogues with the people in their communities. I think that that's even more important when you have a diverse community like we have here in Maplewood. I would say that my experience with the Police Advisory Committee showed that they were all very dedicated and very well-intended, but there did seem to be some issues with just that commission structure and, you know, being able to ascertain a direction. And so, when we discussed in May, what are the best practices? Are there changes that could be made to make this a group that could more easily assist the police department in its mission of making sure that we're inclusive and getting community support and understanding what different multicultural communities and/or residents of our community thought or wanted? The two lieutenants were charged with coming up and doing a study. I have to say that as the Public Safety Director, I think that they did a lot of work on this. I think that their report, you know, reflects what are some of the best practices in our area and, quite frankly, probably nationally. And so, we did bring that to the Police Advisory Commission, and they thoughtfully considered it. I think they asked a lot of great questions. And after that, I think there was general agreement that changing the structure could be something that would provide a wider benefit to the police department and to the community. And so, with that, Mayor, I'd certainly defer to the two lieutenants on the report that they did and the research that they encountered.
Thank you. Lieutenants, do you want to approach the DAS? Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Lieutenant Brian Beardman.
Who's that?
And my partner here is Lieutenant Dan Buzeck. We thank Madam Mayor and the council for giving us some time tonight to discuss kind of the proposal we created and the reason why we did that. I believe you all have received the proposal that we wrote and had time to go through it. We're just going to briefly touch on some of the highlights of that. The main thing we looked at is really the beginning of what this document is called on this PowerPoint, is forging positive collaborations with the community. And back this summer, we were tasked with researching the difference between a committee and a commission that would best benefit the city and our agency and the community. So when we look at positive collaborations with the community, that was our main drive. We wanted to look at it, do our research in an unbiased way. We really didn't care what the mechanism, whether it was a committee or commission, was. We cared about the outcome, the best positive outcome we could have with the community in a collaboration, and that ended up being actually a committee, the Multicultural Advisory Committee. City Manager Coleman already described some of this, but we'll go through real quick. In 2016, the Use of Force Committee or Commission was created. They were really task-oriented. They were tasked with reviewing the department's use of force policies and procedures. I was part of that, part of that group as well. It had a very structured beginning and ending. We wanted to keep the momentum going, so that evolved into Police Advisory Commission. As often good leaders do and strong cities do, you evaluate constantly how programs are running, what they look like. Part of our strategic plan is really evaluating a strategic plan every year, see what's working and see what's not working. So, I give credit to the city, to the Director Nadeau, the city leadership, in tasking us with really looking at the PAC, how it was going, and if there's a better way we could do it, and really follow best practice nationally and locally. So what we did, we reviewed Maplewood's strategic plan. The strategic plan really directs us as far as information sharing with an emphasis on underrepresented populations. So when we looked at our strategic plan and we looked at the current PAC, we realized that it didn't really represent necessarily the demographics of the city and the people that we wanted to reach out to. Also, we looked at the Task Force on 21st Century Policing. Law enforcement agencies should collaborate with community members in communities disproportionately affected by crime. We found the same thing there. The PAC membership was diminishing. It ended up being not necessarily the demographic that we wanted to reach and reach out to. We also reviewed best practices, and that's where we went out, met with separate members of other MAC memberships, and attended their meetings. We learned a lot about how their meetings went, what was different between that and the PAC, and that was very interesting.
Sure. So as Lieutenant Beardman said, part of that evaluation was going out and seeing best practices of what other police departments in our area in the metro are doing. We had to go across the river to find, to find those groups. The ones referenced in the report were both Columbia Heights and Hopkins. However, we also spoke with representatives from Hennepin County and from St. Louis Park who also have successful MACs. The differences that we found, the benefit of transitioning to a multicultural advisory committee as opposed to the current PAC, was in attending those meetings and speaking with the members, is the fact that they were no longer subject to the open meeting laws just led to much more honest, open, natural discussions. In, in both meetings that we attended and speaking with members from different agencies, while they were open and honest, however, they were still always, there's still rules in place where they were always, you know, super respectful and, you know, so it wasn't chaos by not having that structure. They also all had the ability to recruit on an as-needed basis. So if we discovered that there's someone in our population, our community, that is not represented, we don't have to wait for an opening. We don't have to wait for a specific date. We can identify those people and go out and actively recruit them to make sure that everyone's voice is heard in our community. Another benefit that I really liked about these committees was that none of the membership was limited to members of our community. Besides having people who worshipped in the community, who worked in the community, there was a really unique example in Hopkins, where a grandmother who had, was the sole guardian of her grandson, who opened and enrolled and attended school in Hopkins, so she had a really vested interest in that community, even though she was not a member of that community, where she was able to be a member of that MAC. So that was, that was neat to see. And the other benefit to these committees was the fact that they were really fluid and could meet in exigent circumstances. So if we have something in our city where we want to get out there and get ahead of it right after it happens, we don't have to wait for the scheduled meeting. We can call this meeting and have this meeting maybe at the location where the incident occurred, or in a place of worship, in a school. It was just a lot more inviting. And that leads us to just our, our last slide. I think we said most everything we needed to say in that report, based on everything that we did, our research, in looking at best practices in other agencies. It's our recommendation, and we also like the fact that it was supported by the current PAC members, that we form a multicultural advisory committee in the city of Maplewood.
Sylvia?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. As a former member of the PAC, as well as being a member of the Police Advisory, I think, Commission, coming from that commission where we looked at use of force policies, my hope had always been that the PAC would be, look something like what you've described here, and the things, the places that you've researched. So, I am grateful that you went out there and took the time to go and research this, and so that we can know that it does work. And it is something that we, as a community, can do. And it is something that the current PAC wants to do. So, I just, thank you. I appreciate your work and your report.
Thank you. I don't know who was next, if it was Councilmember Knutson or Councilmember Smith. I don't remember. Okay, Councilmember Knutson.
Thank you. Just interested in how this is formed. I mean, how do the people get selected? I notice you said, ability to recruit on an as-needed basis. We're familiar with, of course, interviewing for commissions and stuff like that. How is this, how is your group filled? How do you find members?
Typically, the members are selected by the police department and other members of the MAC. If we're doing our job correctly as police officers and we're being out there and involved in our community, whether it's through outreach events, whether it's just through meeting people through the course of our daily activities, we should have a really good understanding of who the players are and who the people that we want to be part of this group. As the committee is formed, we all, then we'll also get advice and input from those members who are also tied into the community and can probably suggest us, you know, who other people to consider would be. Do you have anyone, any different?
Councilmember Knutson, I think that he's exactly, Lieutenant Buzeck is right. We might find in the course, a couple months into it, that, you know, we don't have a representative of, you know, the Muslim faith, and we have a growing Muslim population. So at that point, obviously, we could reach out to our mosque, we could reach out to other community partners. You know, we might have somebody from South America, but nobody from Central America. And we have a growing population of people from a particular country where it would benefit us to have a better understanding of their culture. So, I think that we know who some of the larger populations of folks are in our city to include some of our new Americans, but, you know, that's fluid and that can change over time. And so I think that there's a constant evaluation for who's at the table and who needs to be at the table, so that everyone's viewpoint can be heard and considered.
My comment would be, is, you know, it would look a little cynical from you to say that you would fill this with people that would be favorable to your position all the time. On the other hand, I see that your commitment to the strategic plan and mission is probably, in my sense, going to guide you to how you would select your members, plus, as you say, representative of the communities that are in the, than Maplewood, would make a lot of sense. So, we'll be expecting that.
Just to follow up, Councilmember Knutson, when I was in Columbia Heights, there was a fairly activist church called the Church of All Nations. And we sought them out in particular because we thought we needed their viewpoints at the table. And they didn't always agree with us in some of these meetings, and that's to be expected. And if everyone in the room is thinking as the police are thinking, one might question what the need was for the, for the group in the first place. And so, I definitely understand and respect what you're saying there and fully agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the hard work you guys have done. It really does show through. It's a well-done document and, I think, really well-thought-out. This journey from the Use of Force Task Force through the PAC has represented probably some of the highest highs and the lowest lows of my time on the council. It's, it's something I've been passionate about since, since the day we started talking about it. And I think some of the work we did as the Task Force was some of the most rewarding work that I've gotten to do as a council member, of fostering these, these conversations that were difficult and sometimes surprising, and, and sometimes surprising in, in really wonderful ways. And I think there was a lot of passion for us to keep that momentum going, as a number of us have said. And I think the fact that we couldn't really translate it into the commission was something that was really heartbreaking for me in a lot of ways. And I really, despite a lot of people's efforts, we just couldn't figure out how to make it work. And it, and that's, I've just been very, very sad about that, because I was really hoping that that would work. So I, I think this is a good next step, and I think this is a good next step to get us back on track to that vision that we had in, in the Use of Force Task Force. I have been resistant to moving from a commission to a committee model for a couple of reasons. One is, I felt it was important for us to, in some ways, sort of codify this effort into our city government structure, that it wasn't just this, you know, a project of the police department, but it was a part of our government. I felt, to me, that was important. And I think there was also a part of it that was important to me of, we've got a collection of smart, progressive law enforcement leaders today, we've got a collection of smart, progressive council members, and we've got a smart, progressive city manager today. That may not always be the case. And if something were to change there, I wanted to make it difficult for the city to not do this. That was probably my biggest reason for wanting to keep it a commission, to, to make it so that if we were going to stop doing this to the city, it would at the very least have to be a very public thing, that someone would have to stand up and say, no, we're no longer going to do this, and here's why. So, I would love it as we continue to consider this, is, if there is a way for us to somehow, I don't know if it's through ordinance or, or whatnot, to have some sort of a public reporting and a, and a process for this on a regular basis, if not require it by ordinance. My concern there is, we want to make sure we don't make it so that it's then subject to open meeting rules and just negate the whole thing we're trying to do here. But, you know, if we can talk to our city attorneys about, is there a way for us to do that, to preserve this and at least give it some sort of a public airing if it were to stop someday? That's something that, that would make me feel even better about the hard work here. But I do think it's the right way forward, and, and I feel like these concerns I have are something we can probably figure out. But, thank you again, and thank you for staying committed to this, because it would have been easy for you guys to just not do it, and, and let the commission sort of fizzle out. And, and so I do appreciate that commitment and the amount of effort that that took. So, thank you.
Just, just a little response to that. Just one thing I want to highlight, maybe just alleviate some of the concern, was the fact of, all these cities that we looked at, who had had this, who had these committee, most of them had had all these a decade-plus, through multiple different administrations, through different chiefs. And what could also be seen in those meetings and in speaking at those groups, is the police officers and the police department probably got just as much benefit or more benefit from having these relationships with the members of the community than the members of the community did with the police department. So, just in seeing all these take place in person, not, not a huge, huge concern of mine, because I, I think everyone, you know, really was appreciative of these groups, benefited equally from them, and that just is what sustained them and kept them going for the decade-plus that the majority of them have been, through multiple administrations.
Thank you for that. You know, I wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Neblet for their service throughout this particular process. You know, I remember when it was Chief Chanel was our, our chief, and really, all of this discussion and dialogue started as a result of the Philando Castile shooting. And our city, I'm very pleased to say, took action and started looking at our police community relations and our use of force. And I'm also very proud of the fact that we are willing to evolve and recognize that, really, the next logical step, because the work that the, that the Use of Force Committee did, and then, or Commission did, and then the PAC Committee did, or Commission, I'm sorry. Got to get those Cs right, okay? But the work that, that everyone did was so instrumental, I think, in getting us where we are today, that the next logical step is having that nimble group that truly is representative of our community. And the only way to do that is to make this leap from a PAC to a MAC, because that really is when we can really utilize that diversity that we have in our community, which we can't do with a commission structure. You know, we're, we're kind of, you know, our hands are tied in that regard, because we have to follow all of those rules about applications, and, you know, if we, if we can't encourage people enough to apply for a commission, we aren't going to have a representative from, you know, all sorts of different groups in our community participating in this. And I really like the idea that it can be much more nimble and really be a bridge between the police department and our community. And so what I would suggest, excuse me, in terms of reporting back, if we would, because I know the police department is doing their annual reports, that if we would get, if the council, I know this would be very helpful to me, getting a report about what the MAC did, what were the events, what were the topics that were discussed, what was, and maybe even more than on an annual basis, because, you know, if there is an issue that comes up at the MAC, I certainly, if, if we, you know, it sounds like we're going that way, but if we could then learn about it so that we're actually, you know, hearing from our community in real time, rather than just an annual report. But you're reporting back to us on what are the actions, what are the activities of the MAC, what's happening out there, so that we can really be kept apprised of all of that. So, I think it's a very valuable discussion. And the lieutenants, I think, I read your report. You did an excellent job. And, you know, here's the other thing, too, is that everything that you were looking at was on the other side of the river, that this really is going to be the first opportunity on this side of the river for a city and a police department to say, we want an inclusive group of representatives from our community to come and work with us on policing in our community. So I think it's a really exciting time. Councilmember Juneman has a comment, too.
Thank you. First of all, Brian, you could look at this and, from the opposite side of this and say, perhaps this will be horrendously successful because they're taking us out of the middle. this will be horrendously successful because they're taking us out of the middle. Because sometimes making it too official is the death knell. Not only do you have a hard time getting it started, you might have a hard time keeping it going. So, you know, sometimes it's good for us to be involved. I think I'm with the mayor, I'd rather be here hearing about what they're doing and sort of jealous that because I'm an elected official, I can't do it, but, you know, whatever. Some other year. So I mean, I really think there's a lot to that. And we're seeing it with our, and we're still trying to crack that, not about how to go about interviewing people for commissions. I mean, you know, just how that's had to change and it's not still where we can get people. We need to step back and not be part of some things and let them come to be and be successful. That's our best role, I think. I have a question, and I don't know that it's necessary for us to, but in this report that the models you looked at in Hennepin County had an embedded social worker. So what is that, I mean, I'm not saying we do this, but do we have some kind of a piece that ties things together like that does for Hennepin County?
Do we know?
Will we?
We'll defer to Chief Nado on that.
I'm not saying it's to be a social worker, but when you list the things that person does, where are we, how are we going to get that?
Councilmember Juneman, the Joint Community Police Partnership, which Mr. Sable and I have discussed on multiple occasions as he was in Brooklyn Park and saw the success there as well, kind of came as a package. And so part of that was cadet program to try and diversify workforces. Part of that was kind of that Hennepin County employee who was literally not a law enforcement officer, oftentimes like a probation officer on loan from the county. And their job, their full-time job, was to build relationships between the city, mostly the Police Department, and the multicultural communities. Because that was something that those cities were really struggling with back, you know, 10, 15 years ago when this came about. Obviously, the model's been so successful, it's been replicated in other cities now, but the core of it still remains. And I think in the last couple of years, there's been a number of discussions that I'm aware of between the county and the cities, that the county has limited resources and no longer wants to fully fund the Joint Community Police Partnership. If in fact that ever came to be, I'm sure that the cities have probably seen enough value, that they would continue to fund it on some level. So is that a value-added piece? Absolutely. You know, can we do this with the resources that we have? Quite frankly, I think we can and I think we have to. I think it's of such a priority that we will take whatever resources we have available to us and continue to focus those resources in a way that allow us to connect with everyone in our community.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the insight, Lieutenant. I think that's helpful to hear about the longevity. I think where my concern is, there's also a lot of cities that have never had them and have had decades of not having them. And so, you know, my concern is just that we have some degree of assurance that it's a long-term, committed program, no matter who's, you know, got the big badge at that time. I don't have any concerns about this cast of characters, but I think, looking into Maplewood history, we know that that can change quickly. So I do, I do think having some sort of encouragement to make sure it's going along would be great, but I don't want to do something egregious that makes it unworkable either. So I do think it'd also be good for us to reach out to the county and maybe see if there's an opportunity for us to get some funds or partnership from them, maybe not the sheriff's office, but maybe county attorney's office or something like that. We know someone at the Department of Corrections too, we might be able to twist his arm. And finally, I just want to say, like, I think this is, this is a great example on how the issues of policing, of race, of changing cultures, of learning how to evolve, it's messy. It's messy and it's difficult and we're going to make mistakes. We're going to make mistakes and we're going to go down the wrong road and we're going to say something and we're going to do something and it's messy. And I do think that this, this group will allow that messiness to take place, but I think even at our level, at the city level, it shows that as, as we've looked at how to address this, it's not, it's not linear and we're going to make mistakes and we're going to have to change direction and adapt and all of that. So I think we got to give us all a little bit of grace to say, we're going to make some mistakes along the way and to know that our intentions are really positive even if we find that we're, we took a wrong step. So I'm, you know, I think, I feel good about that. So again, thanks for sticking with it.
Thank you. Before long, councilmembers, I want to ask Ann Bryson, the Chair of the PAC, is here as well. Councilmember Juneman, did you want to ask another question before I bring Ann up? Okay.
Thank you. Kind of harking back to what she said way back about how we, how we can be part of this, that's the magic to me, is how we can be part of this and nobody knows it. So I think that, and reporting back sounds so formal, but it's, you know, just being kept up to date on what kinds of things you're doing. And if there's an option for sometime where we can show up and not make trouble, it would be nice to be included. But I get it, that, you know, just the elected part of that kind of makes it impossible sometimes. But I, it's to keep some kind of a flow that says, we are interested in this and we do live here and we'd like to be part of it and maybe take the elected part of us away as much as possible, just so we're part of the movement, if you will. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Bryson, would you like to come up to the DS? And share your thoughts, please?
Good evening, and I want to briefly say that it's been a long journey and I was part of the Task Force as well as the PAC. And I want to say that I'm here today, I'll be here tomorrow, and I am representing the community. So regardless of what the makeup of the administration and city government is going to be, the people want this and it's no turning back. So I say to you all is to embrace it and set the foundation or continue to build this foundation that whatever administration come in, that it would be very disastrous for them to say, we're not going to have this because we've opened up a can of worms that are good worms, because we need to have that relationship in order to build a future for the children, but for businesses, for our nature centers, for the, make it inviting and welcoming for the residents and let us continue to be a model city where if we can't live in Maplewood and thrive in Maplewood, there's other communities that are being reflective of Maplewood. So I want to thank you all for being open-minded to this process and certainly I want to thank the Police Department because I'm indeed proud of you all and being engaged with you all in this here journey and I want to just say thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Langdon, would you like to address the council as well?
Thank you, Steve Langdon, a member of the commission. Agree with what Ann said. I think fundamentally, what we're trying to do is we're trying to build relationships. And I think the final goal really is trust. Citizens have trust in the police, police have trust in the community, that's good for everybody. Anytime we affect one part of the community, it affects the other part. So I want to see safe, happy officers who enjoy their job and I want to see safe, productive citizens in our community. Brian talked about the continuation of the program. That was one concern of mine too. I'm a little afraid that because we do have a progressive council, a progressive Police Department, progressive chief people might be tempted to say, what do we need to do that for? Look at our reports, we have a very low use of force. We're really doing well, why do we need to be involved in this? We need to be involved in it yesterday. There is a lot of history in this country that says why we should do this and why we shouldn't do it today, but tomorrow, the next day, and as long as there continues to be a problem with trust between people. I've heard it said that dysfunctional families, the only ones that aren't dysfunctional have one person in it. So I'm fully in support of this. We do have an excellent department, we really do, and that's not why I think we should be involved in it, it's just good for everybody. So thanks for the time and thanks for the commitment.
Thank you very much. I want to thank all of the members of our community that have been part of the Use of Force Work Group and all the time and effort that they focused on our Use of Force policies. And I want to thank all the members of our Police Advisory Commission because you certainly have done an enormous amount of work for our community, building that bridge. And I'm excited about what the MAC can look like and what it can do for our community. And so, City Manager Coleman, tell us what are next steps?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Beatty is on vacation this week and I haven't had a chance to talk to him about all of the logistics of this, but I do know that we will need to bring back for you a resolution dissolving the Police Advisory Commission. And what I need to discuss with him further is how we create this mechanism for the MAC and the reporting structure. And I do know that it's, we can make this up however we want to. So if you want it to be codified or, you know, we can, we can talk, I'll talk to Mr. Beatty about that and even put in a reporting structure so that you feel confident that you're hearing about the work that's being done. I think we do a pretty good job of communicating to you what we're doing, but I understand the concerns too, that you want to keep this to be a permanent group. So I really appreciate that. So I think what we'll do is we'll prepare a resolution for you for the next meeting to dissolve and then we'll have an outline of some, maybe some options on how we move forward with the Multi-Advisory Commission or Committee.
Okay. Wonderful. Councilmembers, I think we've given sufficient feedback. Is there anything else, any other comments? All right, then with that, that is the only agenda item we had. Thank you, lieutenants, for your time. Thank you, chief, for all your hard work on this. And with that, we are adjourned.